Let's go ahead and get started. This is a, just a work session, very informal. And we have one item on this, on this particular work session. It's ACCG presentation for liability insurance in Pickens County. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to ACCG.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's good to be in Pickens County this morning. My name is Joe Dan Thompson. I'm the marketing and field services representative for the ACCG insurance programs. This is Matt Altrie from Marsh. And we're very proud today to present a proposal for the ACCG property and liability insurance program to Pickens County with an effective date of January the first of 2017. As you know, Pickens County is currently in our workers' compensation program and has been a member of that program since 1986. This particular program, the property and liability program, started back in 1987 at a time when it was difficult for counties to find insurance coverage in the commercial market. The reason being is the commercial market made the decision that they didn't really want to insure counties because you had a lot of different risk than an individual would have. Counties have sheriff's department, they have jails to do law enforcement or fire EMS. So it was very expensive for counties to get coverage when they could find it. So counties came to ACCG, wanted us to put the insurance program together, and so we did so, starting in 1987. It's a member-owned program. It's a, it's a pool concept, just like the workers' compensation program. Currently, right now, we have 113 counties in the program. The program is administered by Marsh, who Matt works with. Marsh is one of the world's largest risk insurance services there is. They provide a lot of the underwriting expertise. They help place reinsurance for the program. They're located in Buckhead, not too far away. They handle all of the property schedules, your vehicle schedules, things like that, and they do the pricing for the, for the program. There's several advantages of being in the ACCG insurance programs. You guys are already enjoying some of those through the workers' compensation program. But ACCG and GMA both jointly fund a group called Local Government Risk Management Services, known as LGRMS. They are the risk control arm of ACCG. They handle training for the county, do defensive driving, driving stimulators, helps with policies, things like that. Steve Shields, who many of you may know, is your designated rep for Pickens County. And those charges, well, those services are provided to the members at no additional cost and premium. It's all part of the premium that you would pay. And simply, their, their job is to prevent as many claims as they can. We would like to prevent them all, but we just know that that's not possible. So the ones you do have, you know, we want those to be limited and we want those to be less severe. And so that helps the county out, that helps your citizens out. So it really works for all parties involved. Another advantage is ACCG has their own claims office. It's located in Gwinnett County. It is staffed by ACCG employees, and the only claims that they handle are for Georgia counties and approved authorities. We don't do anything else. The average experience for each of those individuals is about 20 years. It's a very good group, very smart group. They know Georgia law very well. They know what immunities that the counties are entitled to, and that goes a long way in defending a lot of the claims that we see. One of the other, couple more value-added benefits that we have, should the county elect to join the program, we use a company called CBiz Appraisals. And what they'll do is they'll come out and they'll do a full appraisal on all of your county buildings valued at $100,000 and higher. Again, this is at no additional cost to the county. It's part of your contribution that you pay in, in the form of the premium. And they'll do that every five years. So if the county elected to join in 2017, they come out, they do the initial one. Five years later, they come back to update all your appraisals, update your buildings. That lets you know what the buildings are worth. That lets us know how much insurance to write, so that in the event that you have a catastrophic loss, there's enough insurance in place to, to cover there. One of the newest items that we introduced, and it's really beneficial to your human resources department, those counties that are in our program have access to an HR legal hotline. Again, that's at no additional cost. And what that is, is in the event that the county needs to take disciplinary action against an employee, including termination, they can reach out to one of our defense attorneys and get a legal opinion on whether or not that's the, the right thing to do at that time. What we're trying to avoid is county terminating someone, come to find out six weeks later they did it wrong, and then you've got a wrongful termination suit on your hands. So that's in place, again, at no additional cost. You can get an opinion from the attorney before moving forward with the discipline. If you'll turn to tab three, I'm sorry, tab two, in your proposal. That's a current map of the program. All the counties shaded in green are in the program. It's 166 total members. That's 113 counties and 53 authorities. As you can see, a lot of your neighbors to the east and west and north of you are in the program. Another thing that we do is we return dividends back to our members. Those counties who have, have some longevity in the program are eligible to receive a dividend. Takes about 10 years to get that, but on the property liability side, we've returned over $25 million to our members. That's in the form of premium credit, so that's taken right off your, your premium statement at the beginning of the policy period. We also offer a safety discount program where a county can save 5% off the premium, up to a maximum of $10,000. You guys get the safety discount every year in the workers' compensation program that you're in, and a lot of times, that also transfers over to the, the property liability program as well. So that's a little bit of history about the program, some of the advantages of being in the program. And I'll turn it over to Matt to go over some of the coverages that the proposal offers to carry.
Thanks. As Joe Dan said, I, I work with Marsh, who are the world's largest insurance brokers, so I'm a licensed agent. I've been working, all I do is work with this program and the counties in Georgia full-time. We do the day-to-day questions, calls, pricing, additions. Basically, we are like a, or we are like the agent, basically, for the day-to-day work and questions and, and things related to coverage and changes in vehicles and property and all that stuff. And one thing that we manage that you may be familiar with, with the workers' compensation program, is we handle all our renewals on, online. So there's an online application and all the property buildings that are insured and, as well as the vehicles are online, and they can be managed and viewed real-time and added and deleted. So we feel like that's an advantage from a time standpoint. But just getting into coverages, we've, if you're on the, the page that's titled Third Party Liability Coverage Overview, we've tried to match the current coverage where possible, and then in some places, our program minimums may be higher or different than the current coverage, so I'll, I'll talk about those briefly. But we include general liability at a $2 million limit, $1,000 deductible. The current deductible is, is $5,000. We're including law enforcement liability at a $2 million limit, at the same deductible you have. Auto liability, we're providing $2 million limit per accident there, with $75,000 for uninsured motors, which are the same limits as you have. The one difference we have on the auto liability is we have a $1,000 deductible for an at-fall accident, whereas your, your current carrier has, does not have a deductible for an at-fall accident, but you pay a deductible for the conflict collision to fix your car, so you're still, in most cases, paying a deductible. You guys are averaging five auto claims per year, with only a couple of those, part of those being at-fall accidents. So the most it would, on an average year, cost would be an additional $1,000 or $2,000 for paying that deductible. But as you'll see on the pricing page, the, the overall savings and premium will more than make up that $1,000 to $2,000 difference. Public officials liability, we are including $2 million with the same deductible as well. But we have a occurrence form instead of a claims-made form on that coverage. There's a detailed letter that I'll leave with you guys that's attached to the back of your proposal book rather than go into much detail on the difference with that. In the middle section, we include coverage that's automatic for terrorism in the commercial marketplace or your current coverage. You have to pay a little extra for terrorism coverage. We don't have a terrorism exclusion, so it's just a full $2 million limit. And if you skip down to the bottom part, the, the main other thing of note would be that, per your request, we're not covering the fire department or EMS operations, since those are placed with a separate insurance program. So those are, those could be added at any time, but they are excluded from our pricing for this reason. To turn to the next page, Property and Crime Insurance. I've included in the back of this book the list of the property insurance locations that are covered under the program. So we won't go through all those in detail, but it matches what I was sent earlier this year by Fay, and they're available there for her to verify. So we include, what we do when we send out the appraisal firm, if you were to choose to go have coverage with us, we would send out the appraisal firm shortly after January 1, and they would appraise all the buildings $100,000 and above, and then we could get back with you and discuss the appropriate values at that time and change anything that may not be quoted correctly at this time. But some of the highlights of our coverage that, that are different than what we have now are in the crime, in the crime section, we automatically include no additional charge, any statutory bond that's required by law, anything from the deputies to pro-adjuncts to any of those that, that are required by law to be bonded. Those are included with no charge. For every other employee, we provide $50,000 bond for all those that do not have a legal requirement to be bonded. Down at the bottom, a few of the main things that separate our program on the property coverage. We provide a $2.5 million limit for demolition and increased cost of construction. Counties have their share of older buildings, and if those are damaged by fire or tornado or any other sort of event, they would have to be rebuilt in current building codes. And the current policy only includes $500,000 limit for that, which a lot of times is too, too little to pay for elevators or other items that bring it up to ADA code especially. We, we are including $5 million in flood coverage. The current, the current policy is, excuse me, is $1 million in flood coverage. Our flood deductible is only $1,000. And, excuse me, the, the current flood deductible on the current policy is $50,000, so we have an advantage there. So that's the main thing on the property coverage. You'll turn to the, the next page. We provide boiler and machinery equipment breakdown coverage. Covers any equipment, HVAC equipment, boilers, any type of those equipments from breakdown, the motors, the piping, the pumps, refrigeration systems.
Now, what do you call a breakdown? You're talking about overall maintenance breakdown? Are you talking about damage by storm, flood, fire?
It, it can be, it can be a, a complete, like a blowout, basically. I mean, it doesn't have to be caused by a fire or a tornado. It could be a, you know, standard breakdown, you know, some happens to the refrigeration system. HVAC or something like that, computer system breakdown. But the current, the current, you have that now as well on the current program. Skip down to the bottom of that page, the cyber liability. This is something you don't have. We do not charge for it. It is a million-dollar limit for the liability. And then, more importantly, the privacy response expenses is $500,000. That's where you're required by law to be notified, to notify the public if your computer systems are hacked and the records are released, you have to notify them. So we provide a $500,000 limit, and there's no additional cost for that, that service or for that coverage, excuse me. And the last thing I'll talk about real quick, tab six is just a side-by-side basic comparison of the current program versus the program that we quoted. Went through a lot of these limits, but you can just see just a basic limit deductible comparison for each coverage. Total pricing at the bottom, we're coming in $239,872 versus, the premium I've listed for the current program is, is of a year ago at the proposal time, so it does not include any changes throughout last year, because I don't know what those premiums would have been. But I feel like we have quoted a couple vehicles on our, our, our program that were not included in this pricing from the current program. And then on the next page, the last page, is just a, is just, again, it's a premium summary. Our, our policy year runs July 1 to July 1, so what we would do is charge a pro-rata premium of $118,000 to get you from January 1 to July 1, and then it would start renewing on July 1 at a full annual price. And then there's a higher limits of coverage, our additional cost. Your, your current policy is $2 million limit, and we have included prices to go up to $3, $4, and $5 million limit. That's it. If you have any questions, let me know. We, we appreciate the time.
Well, I think I did want to add on the, if you'll look at back on the page for the tab six, the general liability, law enforcement. Your current policy carries a $2 million occurrence, $4 million aggregate. What that means is that they'll pay no more than $4 million per policy period for losses that occur under those coverages. Where ours, our proposal, there's no aggregate limit. So if you had four $1 million claims the first four months of the year, you'd have no coverage the rest of the, rest of the policy period. Whereas on ours, people have $50 million claims, and it'd always, those claims would always be paid. There's no cap on it.
The insurance we got now, is that per incident or is that per total year cumulative?
It's like, say, for a general liability claim, it's $2 million per occurrence. So any one claim, the most we would pay would be $2 million.
And it caps out at four?
And it caps out at four throughout the policy period. Whereas, there is no cap for the policy period on the, on our proposal.
Yeah, one thing I will mention while I have you here is you guys buy the $2 million auto limit. A lot of our counties take advantage of the auto immunity laws in Georgia for counties, which it says that counties are only responsible for an auto claim for the limit of insurance that they buy. So what that means is a lot, a lot of the counties only buy $1 million. So it's, it's your option. It's not written in here, but it's a $7,700 annual savings if you guys were to lower your auto liability limit to $1 million instead of $2 million. So we'd like to provide that to everybody as a consideration.
And that was on automobiles, my break cover.
And if you wanted to make any changes to deductibles, you know, we could do that as well. We just compare it to what, what you currently have.
I was just kind of breezing through this thing as y'all were talking, but the, you have a, you have an in-house base of lawyers, attorneys?
That's correct.
You do not go outside your, your scope to hire attorneys from outside?
We have...
They're not employees of ACCG.
They're not, they're not ACCG employees.
But they're paid by ACCG.
That's correct.
The, okay, so who, I know you two are not, I'm assuming you're not attorneys, so we should be fine. The, I just, just checking to see, you know, I didn't know if they, they went outside their scope, if ACCG went outside their scope and hired attorneys. So you've got attorneys in-house.
We do. They're not, like you said, they're not ACCG employees, but we've got them all throughout the state. So if you have a law enforcement-type claim, then we have, we use an attorney that specializes in that type of law.
But it's with the same company, the same firm?
No, they're different firms.
They're different firms. They're all over the state. Yeah, we've got them, but it's not one firm that handles all the claims.
Oh, okay.
They're separate firms.
But those fees, if needed, are paid by the insurance company except for the deductible, correct?
That's correct, yeah. And the defense costs are not part of the policy limit. It's, it's an addition.
Well, that being said, who would they answer to? The client or the insurance company?
They would, I mean, they're going to represent the county. We're going to pay their, their bill. They may represent the county, they may represent the employee, but, as I say, when they may be, the superintendent was involved in that.
So once they, if they're representing, say, for instance, Pickens County, but they have a, they have an issue with what they do, do they go back to ACCG and get a, get some sort of comment from them? Should we do it this way or do y'all want to do it this way? See where I'm going with that?
A little bit. Sometimes we'll have, there'll be a situation where an employee will need an attorney and the county will need an attorney. I don't know if that's where you're going. Will cover both of them?
Well, where I'm going is the fact that, that you guys are paying for the, for the attorneys.
That's correct.
Who do they, who do they represent? Do they represent ACCG or do they represent Pickens County?
They represent Pickens County.
Okay. Without any input from ACCG on how they need to proceed?
I mean, we'll give, I mean, our claims adjustments will work with them, but if an attorney suggests, hey, we do this, this, or this, then, then, you know, we're not, we're not attorneys. We're going to let them.
Understood.
Represent their clients to their best.
Every attorney I've had to work with normally represents the guy that sends him a check, no matter what, no matter what, what. So ACCG is paying it, you know, if ACCG come up, but if we go ahead and say, we go ahead and settle this claim, no matter what the client says.
We're paying them, they're representing the county or the county employees.
Okay, all right.
On this, general liability deductible, we have $5,000 now, and you're proposing $1,000. Do you know approximately what the savings would be if we, did you look at the $5,000?
The way our program is, we don't offer the $5,000 unless, unless you were to also raise the property deductible to $5,000. They have, we have to have them the same. So it's, it's just reflected in the pricing. You're not really paying more for it.
I'm, I'm, what I read, more or less, ACCG is self-insured, more or less, is what you're saying. You rely on your, the, the input of your customers paying the premiums to keep this insurance company valid. It's kind of like an in-house type, type group.
Right.
For instance, the, if you were to have a, an exorbitant amount of claims up and down the coast, I know you've got some counties up and down through here.
We take, ACCG internally only self-insures the first $500,000 of a property or liability claim. So above that, it's insured with the, re-insured with the commercial marketplace. On property, it's, it's a good number of carriers because of the coastal exposure. Liability, it's, it's, most of it's with AIG above the, the $500,000.
Well, I guess my question is, and I'm trying to cut to the chase, but you used to have a lot of claims on coastal areas.
It would be one...
Would the, would the exorbitant expense of trying to correct those issues would be paid by your customers that are on the west side of the coast?
They, they are charged a higher amount, yes, for their property insurers. They, they have higher deductibles and a lot higher rates for being on the coast. So you guys benefit inland, for example, is what we call Pickens County. That's how we're able to give you a $1,000 deductible on property. On the coast, they have, like, we insure some of those counties in there.
Because of liability issue on that side. But there again, I'm saying, if you have an exorbitant amount of fees happens on the coastal of the state of Georgia, and say, rocks on it about a year, and the amount of money that you're spending could be up to the billions of dollars for all the, for all the flood damages and all, do your customers on another part of the area that hadn't had that flood damage, when they're, when they get their next premiums, is it going to go up to help pay for that?
It would, it would be no more than the commercial marketplace raises rates after a hur, a bad hurricane, for example. It, it would be similar to that where there could be a rate decrease because it is spread, but it's just like that with any insurance. But the pool itself, from our financial standpoint, we're only, if it's a coastal hurricane, for example, we only, we only pay the first $1 million, and then it's re-insured through AIG and whatever. So for it, it would, something like that would not make a dent in our financials from that consideration as well.
And when the Hancock County courthouse burned down a couple of years ago, I know there were some questions, well, is my county going to be penalized for that? And the answer to that was no. We didn't raise anybody else's rates because of the, of the fire. They just, it was all covered through, like you said, the first $500,000 was insured by ACCG. Everything else went to reinsurance. So it's not, we're not going to penalize you that for something that happened somewhere else.
So you underwrite H-RIS, you look at H-RIS individually?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, each, each county has a different rate on property and liability based on their own individual merit. We go, where our advantage as a group goes is, is, a lot of that has to do with the cost of our excess in reinsurance coverage, because we can come as a larger group and purchase a larger amount at a cheaper cost. So from that standpoint, you're a little more insulated from market conditions than you would be on your own.
Is there any other, going to be any other cost involved? If we decide to go this route, is there going to be any other cost involved in the, in the premiums for Pickens County as we go further?
No. No, we, we charge an annual premium for property and liability. We do not do an audit, so there's no adjustment at the end of the year in the price or anything. Throughout the year, the only changes would be if the county adds vehicles or adds properties. We provide any vehicle or building that's valued at $250,000 or less, if you add it during the policy period, we, we don't charge until the next renewal. So sometimes that's 11 months of free coverage, sometimes you might not add it till June and you might only get one month of free coverage. But, so we don't, only on large changes would we send an additional invoice for an endorsement.
I read your, I read your letter and then the other sample letter you had on the back about outstanding issues, outstanding lawsuits that the county might have for the future come across to that. If, I know there is some outstanding lawsuits we've got, you know, looming back there in the deep bar holes, everybody calls it. What is your, do you take that over? Do you put that into the responsibility of the previous insurance company that we have now or how do you?
The purpose of that letter, I know it's really wordy, but the purpose of it is to get you to obviously think about it and turn in everything you possibly can to the prior carrier because you have a, a claims made coverage. And if they note, they're notified, then they're, then you've done your part to put them on notice that there could be a situation. Anything new that you don't know about, even if it happened, we're, we're going back, our proposal, we've put in here to go back to January 1, 2012. So anything that happened January 1, 2012 or afterwards, we'll cover under our program as long as it's something new. It's not one of these...
Something that you don't currently know about.
It's not a pending issue.
Okay.
That date, that date is negotiable. If it's a problem, we can go back further for you, but typically, you know, four years is a pretty good amount for no, no char, we're not charging for that.
Right.
To go back, so. Your current policy is going back to 2002, but, you know, the more realistic scenario is something involving children that goes beyond the, because their statute of limitations is longer, so you don't, you guys don't have a school exposure where that's as likely of a scenario to have a long-term claim, you know, abuse claim or something like that.
How long has it been since we had your reappraisal? How long have you been doing? Two years ago, wasn't it?
Actually, they...
Or they come out?
They asked, they did one this year.
That's right.
So we'll do that every five years. That's no, no fault for the county, if you guys elect to join our program.
Yeah, and to give you another scenario related to the large claims and whether it affects anybody, we, he had mentioned Hancock County courthouse burned down, and that was one of the largest property claims. It was almost $8 million. They, obviously, being a smaller county, paid very little in premium to, for that $8 million claim, but we, you know, we've had rate reductions the last couple of years on property. So that, something of that size did not affect us, to, just to give you an example.
Well, I'd just go back, I'd just go back a few years. There's a couple of insurance companies that had those issues back years ago that had some major, major claims, and they raised the premiums of their other individuals that were paying into that policies to make up the difference. I didn't know what, what would be the status of y'all.
Yeah. We, I mean, we are subject to market conditions as well to an extent, but we, we also are a little more insulated because we, we take some of the risk and, and then spread out the reinsurance.
So you're not insuring anything up in Gatlinburg or Pigeon Ford right now?
No. And we had less, I mean, it, we had probably less than $500,000 of damage from the October hurricane this year, even though we insured quite a large amount of the coast there. It did materialize into county damage for the most part.
Mr. Barnes looking in?
Y'all there? She's taking everything in. I just wrote down, I had six or seven there, and I've got some notes in here. If you have any questions between now and the 15th, I think, or the next meeting is, tell them to call us. Fay's got our contact information. If you can answer any, any questions that you may think of tomorrow or next week.
Okay.
Fay, have you any questions? Paula, you HR, you have an HR question?
Just one quick one. If, if we have an HR issue, we have an employee that, that we're having some issues with, the, your attorney's saying we need to settle, we feel like we don't need to settle, who wins out on that one?
I spent six years in the claims office before I came over to the marketing side, and ACCG has a reputation of, if we don't know the claim, we're not paying a claim. We do not want to set the precedent to where people, they will, they'll settle just to get rid of our, our first-hand claims where we've spent hundreds of thousands in defense costs. It would have been far easier to, to settle that claim.
Sure.
But we don't want that reputation that we're going to...
Settle it because you give them out?
That's right. I worked for travelers and AIG, and they would do that. They'd settle it.
A lot of them do that.
Just to get rid of it.
Right.
You know, ACCG does not want that reputation. We've got, counties are entitled to immunities, and we will, we rely on those immunities to the very end. I don't have any more questions right now.
Look over the material closer.
Yeah, if Mr. Fay lets us know, will we have to come back on the 15th to the, to the commission meeting? If there's any questions, we can be here.
Is there going to be a lapse of coverage coming from one insurance company to another?
Shouldn't be.
No.
You'll start January 1.
12:01 AM.
12:01 AM.
I'm asking questions now.
I've got a, I'll leave it with Fay. There's a sample resolution I printed out if you do decide to join. That's all we would need is, is just to join.
We don't want you to have any gaps in coverage.
Okay.
So 12:01, January 1, we'll be on the call for you.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out.
All right, you're welcome.
If I don't get to talk to you for an hour, then y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Y'all do the same.
And for anybody else sitting here, y'all have a Merry Christmas too. And I am going to go ahead, it's approximately 20 minutes to 11, so I'm going to, unless anybody's got any other questions or comments, I'm going to shut this meeting down. Y'all have a wonderful weekend, a great weekend. Thank y'all. This meeting is now adjourned.